All right, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for making time to be here. It is 5:34. We're going to get started with this tax increment reinvestment zone number one. Regular board meeting today is Tuesday, April 11th, 5:34. We are at City Hall, Council of Chambers. Calling this meeting to order, if everyone would rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Camilla, would you do roll call for us?
Yes. Mr. Martinez?
Present.
Mr. Heather?
Present.
Mr. Castillo?
Present.
Mr. Zavallus?
Here.
And Ms. Alexander?
Present.
And Mr. Navarro and Mr. Mia Bonapie, Tony Estri.
Motion to excuse Mr. Navarro and Mr. Mia. They are at a town hall in Narso Rayo this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, but Mr. Castillo, all those in favor say aye. Any ayes, any against, none, motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number four is minutes. Presentation of any previously approved amended board meeting minutes. So this item, and I want to thank Mr. Navarro for chairing the last meeting. This item was added on last meeting and I wasn't able to attend. It's basically to bring back any amended minutes for your, just for your records and your review. I think there is one that's being presented from December. Camilla, did you want to cover the edits that were made on this one?
Yes, we only had two comments on the December minutes. It was on item seven, to include the mention of the parklets. So they should be highlighted in the copies in your pocket. And then item number nine, to include mention of the AEP conversation and the correction on the councilwoman to councilmember. That should be highlighted.
And you will bring any others as they're being amended?
Yes, any amendments, we can bring back during the next meeting, just to verify the comments.
Very good, thank you, appreciate that. All right, item B is approval of minutes for March 14, 2023. Those are in your packets. Yes, Ms. Frank?
Viviana Frank, for the record, Able City. On item nine, there's discussion and possible action and there's no vote. And I don't know if there needs to be a vote there or not. It's on the facade improvement program.
I don't think, I saw the video, I don't think they had any action on it.
Would it be no action underneath there?
Yeah, it should be notated. There wasn't any action. Can you confirm that and just amended?
Yeah, there was no action taken during that.
So we'll add a note, no action taken.
So is there going to be a, sorry. Is there, do we follow what's on there or not?
There was.
So I checked in with Dr. Riva about an update on this item. So there is, this board already created a facade improvement program. They're supposed to come back with recommendations for what the guidelines would look like. I don't know if that's your question.
No, my question is, so it is following what's underneath here, but no vote needs to be taken on it. I just wanted to clarify.
And just to clarify, during the meeting, it was mentioned to look into it, but there was no action taken on anything.
Did we decide to create a committee, including Laredo Main Street?
And, yes. And Mr. Navarro said that there would be no action, only just stating that the committee would be built and it was Ms. Alexander, Mr. Martinez, and Mr. Mia.
But we did that at the last meeting, because I was here when we created that. So we created the facade improvement program and added, made sure that Laredo Main Street was on there. I remember because I voted on that, so that's already done.
There's no funding?
There's no funding and there's no guidelines right now, so that'll come back. So Dr. Riva said that probably at the next meeting she'll be ready to present some options. So I'm trying, I'm looking for my notes on the committees on wayfinding. Actually, there's in my notes here. You'll find my notes from watching the tape. There's a facade program, subcommittee, Willie Martinez, Carol Alexander, and Mr. Mia got nominated, even though he wasn't present. So we need to check that they did vote, because actually my notes, you know, say it was, I put a date on it, so we'll need to check.
Yeah. I think, but the way that it was during the meeting, there was no action on it, but he did, he said, you know, we're building this subcommittee with these members. Now that it requires a motion, I'm not sure.
Okay, so we can check. We'll add it at the next meeting. Because I would say for you, if you guys are okay.
We should go ahead and set up a meeting. All this committee.
You can do that.
And have the, yeah, have the first meeting, reach out to Dr. Riva, make sure we all get together.
If you get together, then you can bring back.
We bring it to the board, yes.
Yes, funding recommendations as well.
Is, is, is Maria still going to be on this board?
I'm not sure, not sure if she is. There'll be a slot for sure, based on bylaws that'll give the city manager an appointment. That's what I want to cover during some of the discussion, the next session, the next item. Actually, item five, item six. So if you can just confirm the video again, just to make sure, not so we can clarify that. Appreciate that. Any other comments or edits, clarifications?
Motion to approve minutes as presented?
It's been moved to approve by Mr. Castillo. Is there a second? It's been seconded with the note that we're going to follow.
Follow that.
Any additional discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? None, motion passes, thank you. Item five is citizens' comments. Citizens are required to fill out a witness card no later than 5:45, and it can be found here at the 1110 Houston Street. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. No more than three persons will be allowed to speak on any side of an issue. Speakers may not pass three minutes to any other speaker. Comments should be relevant, excuse me, to city business and deliver in a professional manner, no derogatory remarks will be permitted. I don't have any cards, I don't think we have any.
Could I sign up as a stakeholder and go on that side and then address the board and then come over here and be a board member?
You can do it from here. You're going to state it, you can just state your comments, public comment.
Well, the public comment, we can do it in item six, we could just do it in item six.
All right, sounds good. All right, there being no citizens' comments, we still have a couple of minutes left. We'll move on to item six. Discussion on any dot com related effort or activity of board members' interest or concern.
I'm interested in the headline news. The other day in the newspaper, it said that Laredo has recaptured its number one position in trade. I don't know what the billion dollar number was, but I knew it was at least multiple billions of dollars. And I'm wondering when there will be a group that includes the city and the county and the state and the federal government to address what the entrance to our city, county, state, and nation looks like. I was there the other night and it is dirty, it is dark, it is not safe. And who's in charge of that? I'm wondering when there'll be some kind of, when we can work together so that we find some money to address that. Because the TURs is, it's more specific, it's not, it can't address something that our, again, city, county, state, and nation are benefiting from this trade that's coming into the tune of billions of dollars. And that's, and anybody can go out there to see what it looks like any time of night. And even in the nighttime, there's, you know, there's pedestrian traffic and women, children, there's people crossing all the time. And it's, you know, it's not something that I think that we are proud of.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think that's been a blighted area for many years now. I remember we had some homeless folks living there when we had more trees and more brush where they could hide. I'm going back many years, like six years, I say many, but in recent time. We removed them from the location. We went out there, some elected officials and I, we moved them because we had something coming and nothing got realized. So in terms of our business, I think, and it's related to one of the items I wanted to touch on, because I saw, I liked the discussion that was had about the parking, the angled parking for the plazas. And I think we ought to put that into motions. So what I would suggest is staying along the lines of accountability for those four blocks. I know there's some traction, there's always some traction, but I think we should cover some baseline, right? At least have it, have some sod and some trees that we wouldn't replace and keep them watered. I'm in agreement. If, I would not object, I would support an item that we would make a plea and write into our leadership to tend to that at a baseline, while we put something up, while we work on it. And then two, if this board can assist with funding on niches, right? Because we don't have enough to do, we have way lots of other things to achieve with very little money. But if we wanted to, you know, make a point about keeping things up there, a lot of it is really maintenance, you know?
Well, I'm specifically speaking, not of the four blocks, but I'm specifically speaking of bridge number one, the only pedestrian bridge in the city. And I'm speaking about pedestrians because our mission is connected to walkability. So I'm addressing the walkable nature. I'm addressing Saragossa Street where the pedestrians come in. And what I'm, what I am begging for is an alliance of the different entities that not only connect to that as in our city, but benefit from that financially. And there's, I know that they think they're doing, I think, it's not that they're willfully ignoring it, I understand that. I'm not imagining that they're willfully keeping funding from addressing that need. I think they just don't know. I think the county just doesn't know and the city doesn't know who to put in charge. And certainly the state, text on. And, you know, we have a big, well, you see them, we have quite a presence of federal officers in that area. And the lack of an alliance to work together to create something that we're proud to show the world, you know, front page, billions of dollars, number one trade route. But go down there and take a picture or sit out there and, you know, we could use some attention.
Yeah, so, I mean, along the same lines is this idea that, you know, for years been asking for downtown. This is as close as we've come to having a downtown. At least in my request is to have a downtown assistant city manager that looks at downtown, not just solely downtown, but that gets that assignment. So we have Mr. Mia that served here, that's as close as we have come to that. I think that's something that we can continue to request so that we get some attention, at least from the city side. I haven't really requested any assistance from the county on that issue, but I think it's not out of order for us to try to deal with that and bring folks together on it. So if you, you know, if you'd like to see something on the agenda where we put some teeth behind getting folks to work on this with us, I'd be supportive of it. I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in on that topic. I mean, I agree. I don't, it's hard to disagree. There's a tree that every time we walks out, I will say, I look at, I mean, I've been saying that now for five years. That tree's been dead and gone and there's others that we don't replace. The conversation about who's going to maintain our improvements, once these are done, always surfaces too. So, I mean, I appreciate you bringing that up and it is a contemporary topic. I thought you were talking about the other side, which needs as much help as.
I thought you were talking about bridge number two for one second.
Bridge number two, well, that's aesthetic, right? Purely. What I'm talking about is, you said it, there's a new little location of snacks and whatnot called Lamina on Convent and Saragossa. And you can sit outside there and just watch what's happening. And of course, there is some, in our improvements, we have those four corners there at Saragossa and Convent. And the best way to get ideas is to go sit on Convent and just, you know, look at what's happening there, at the traffic that's moving there and there. Of course, there's tens of thousands of people, you know, moving across that bridge. And that is our history, that is our city's history. And I'd love to see the, this particular board is funded by stakeholder tax dollars. And of course, with your expertise, you've worked at the city to maximize or the amount that we can work with. Leverage, yes, thank you. But this board has been in existence since 2017, I believe, and funded by the stakeholder tax dollars. And when Mr. Jimmy was here, and he says all the people he knows, he's not here today, because I think he's out of town, but he lives out of town, but that a lot of the stakeholders are still unaware of what's coming. And I think probably when I talk about the county and the state and the federal government, that they too are unaware of these issues. Because everyone goes and does their job and they not really, they're not stopping to look, but this is our city.
Yeah, well, I think we just have to press more buttons and get folks, that's get folks talking.
Yes.
And, you know, reinvigorate that, those discussions.
And certainly an alliance of, you know, we're all working for, certainly with city council, every district connects to downtown. I don't live in District Eight, right? But I do, I'm here a lot and I live in a different, I live in a different district and.
And I do agree with the other thing, you know, you've mentioned that there's a lot, you know, I don't know how you said it, but there, no one's intending not to do something or to work against anything. I think we're just working sometimes in silos and at different timing. If we could all get aligned, I think we would achieve much more of it. You know, if there's an item that needs to be put on that puts some more teeth to that discussion, I certainly can help craft it and put it on the next meeting. They will entail visiting people individually, including the different taxing entities to support the effort, but I think that needs to happen. Are there any items? I have a couple of other items to touch on related to this, and some of them are housekeeping. So I wanted to share the ordinance, may I? Am I, or did you have any other comments?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, so the ordinance I created, the TURS, has particular terms and I wanted to put that up if possible. Do I need to go over there? I don't mind doing it. If you could just go to, so what I wanted to make sure, because the website doesn't have the correct terms. And I was going to put it on this agenda, but I wanted to give the board a heads up. We really need to elect a vice chair, the bylaws allow it. It's happened, it happened last time, obviously. I was hoping to be here and it's something happened that I couldn't be here. And it'd be good just to have a go-to vice chair. If you can go to, you're on the 1701, go to page, page three. So when it was formed, they had four members, right, Section Three, and you all should have received the copy of it. I have a printed copy if you need to see it after we roll through this. On the second paragraph, you'll see, "All subsequent appointments shall be two-year terms. Thereafter, the mayor shall annually nominate and appoint by city, through city council, subject to city council approval, member of the chair." So I'm due for, or this position is due for an appointment, right? So we're going to go through that. I already reached a year, the mayor will need to appoint a chair. But most importantly, the website has different terms, four-year terms, so it's not considered, that needs to be cleaned up. I'm letting you know, because I'm going to make a request through the council member that that get, be corrected. And then I'm also letting you know that I would like, if I'm still chairing next meeting, like for us to be ready to handle, unless you all feel differently, a vice chair, that a vice chair be nominated and voted on. Subsequent to this, in 2017 also, they added two members under the, and I don't think you have this one, it's on the website, but this one basically added two members, it says positions five, six, and seven. So position five is the one that the mayor points. They gave him two more appointments. So just so you know, how do we get to seven? They made an amendment, they passed an ordinance. So I wanted to give you all this background. I don't know if I'll be here, you know, continue chairing or on the board, but you all need to be aware of this, it does need to be cleaned up, particularly the terms. I think that's very important because it needs to be, this needs to be consistent with the ordinance. So those are the items in terms of FYI, you know, you all can tell me if you agree that there should be a vice chair. I think it's just good housekeeping to have a vice chair and hopefully do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that we can have that systemic go-by going forward. So that's on this. The other item, we spoke a little bit during Ms. Alexander's discussion. I do agree that there should be a assistant city manager person that should be, should follow the downtown improvements and downtown and inner city too. And maybe meeting with the city manager and through the council member, we can achieve that designation. We've tried before. I'll say, I mean, I had a really good, and I continue to have a good experience with Reon this board, I think it's very helpful. I heard, you all heard the comments about the water issues downtown? Those need to be resolved and bringing the department heads together maybe has been a little trying, but the consultants haven't said that, I'm saying that. And the other item that I put on the agenda is for that purpose. But if we have a designee, then that person can round them up and make it easier for them and for everybody else. So anyway, these are kind of housekeeping items that I think we need to, we need to really try to get them sorted out. The other, the last thing I'm going to mention is the clarity that we need on who's administering our projects, right? Project management and administration. So oftentimes when we serve on public boards, there's liaisoning that occurs, as is the case here, with the city department with, and which is, you guys have been great, your community development has been nothing but good to us in terms of setting up our minutes, providing copies, doing all of that. But the question came up with the mural about who's going to provide a status. So the status comes through this board, right? It either comes through the city or it comes through our consultant. So I think we need to clarify that and make sure that whatever we expect the city to do, we have a good understanding where it ends and where the consultant administrative job begins. So that, because we ask, there's going to be a status, right? And there may be no movement, which is fine, we'll start, we'll take care of it, it'll move. But it would be important for this board to be clear about who's really administering for this board. Because it may not be something that the city department's doing. So there's a 5% admin fee that's charged, it's like $27,000. It's not enough to say, well, we got a full-time position over there. So I think, and I think what we did when we hired Able City is we said, we wanted them to do a lot of the project management. But that needs to be clear, and they're doing, they're doing what we're asking them to do. It's more like making it clear. So I did visit with Rick a little bit about it, is to maybe change the way we do the agenda to take care of that admin piece upfront. So when the question comes up, why is this happening, what's the timeline, we're answering it as a board, because it really sits on us. I saw, I don't want to be levered, but I did see, and I know there's another board that's dealing with not similar issues, we don't have issues, but there could be, we don't have a clarity on what the expectation is from the liaisoning from the city. So if we don't have a manager at the city that's managing our projects, then we're doing it. And I don't think that's what we're doing. So we need to be, I want to have this discussion because it's important that as we move forward that we know what the expectations are. Now, if we expect community development to come back and give a status on what's the progress on murals, what's the progress on this expenditure, then that needs to be clear with them and it needs to be probably funded to some degree, if that's our expectation. Those are the housekeeping things I wanted you all to be aware, because I think our two newest board members, you haven't been part of some of this structure before, I wanted you all to know that. I already, I have known about the term error for a while and I've mentioned it a couple of times, but this time I wanted to make sure you all saw the document, it's what's on the website, it needs to be brought up. And I'll take care of raising that issue myself for clarity. The admin piece, it's clear to me that Able City can charge us for, if we say, help us with these meetings, coordinate them, that's our expectation, that's, we actually hired them to help us do that. Somewhere along the way, maybe our actions weren't clear. I'll have clarity on the mural stuff when we get to that item. I know where the delay was and what the delay has been. So I'll speak to what I remember on that item. That's what I wanted to share with the board. I don't know if you all have any questions on background on any of this?
I have a comment.
You're going.
I know I always have a comment, but the frustration of trying to figure out who's in charge, who's on first, right? It's almost the who's on first bit is who's tending to downtown, right? It's our central business district, it's our historic center, it's the gateway to the United States, right? We have much traffic coming through our downtown, but who's in charge of it? Who's in charge of cutting that tree down that has been dead for years? Who's in charge of identifying that people cannot walk down a sidewalk because there is a tree right in the middle of a very small sidewalk? Who's in charge of that? The people that are pulling, pushing their babies and pulling their suitcases? Those are not the people that are in charge of that. So is it part, I've been asking this question since 2017. Who is in charge? And do they know that they're in charge? And the answer clearly is that nobody's in charge and everybody knows that somebody else is doing something or not. So that missing component is, it's a vacuum, it's vacuous and it's glaring because is it community development? Is it parks and rec? Is it utilities? Who addresses that missing? And I'm not saying it's all the city, right? Because we have those other leaders, right? But for clarity, we have those other administrators, I guess I should say. For clarity, using your word, the same thing will happen once we build these 2.5 million, once we spend these monies on improvements, nobody's in charge. And that in other cities around, not the nation, around the world, the business district is in charge of maintaining that. And our lack of a business, we have a business district, but it's not, it's trying to work, but it's not funded. And that lack of a business district is a glaring hole and it will, once we build something, it's only going to be compounded that nobody's in line to take care of the improvements. And so the last meeting I did ask, and I'm not sure if we could recommend something or, I think we have had the representative of the business district here before, not today, but maybe we put that on the agenda and include some of the, for clarity, some of the other administrators for this area. And figure out who, what, where, when. And maybe we could encourage them to get their business district up and running. Funded and staffed, so that these questions will be easier to answer.
And it is, I went back before the meeting and reread the project plan, so, and in the chapter three eleven. So it's an eligible expenditure to help maintain what you just built. But it's, obviously, we're not gonna, that's the clarity that I'm looking, we're not gonna do it. We're board members, there needs to be a third party or the city that accepts that responsibility. The project development agreement, which is mentioned on the agenda, now, I'm gonna put that up on the screen too, gives the city that responsibility by virtue of the relationship between the city and the TERFs. But I do agree, and I've made this suggestion before, if we need to be, I guess, provide more leadership with it, is to assemble those parties and host a roundtable to start building some sort of prototype for what this district could look like. And then you begin to have conversations about how do you fund it, and who's gonna fund it, and who's gonna lead it. I think the people with capacity should lead it. The TERFs doesn't have, obviously with this discussion, administrative capacity, that's not the role of, I see it of the TERFs. But you have it in Main Street, you may have it in other groups, and that have the interest to carry that out. I think if we can be the vehicle that brings them, the convener that brings those folks together, let's do that. And move it ahead, and get ahead of our projects being completed, so that we're ready when these are done. So that's another item we can put together. In the manner that Ms. Dr. Riva, you know, forming a subcommittee is taking that, bringing it back to the board, and then this board acting on the recommendations that are made by those folks, I think that would work.
If this board could invite some of the stakeholders to a meeting, I don't know, you know, the last meeting was well-attended, but that's just certain board members reaching out and texting and whatnot. But maybe for our next meeting, we could actually, I don't, I know people, I read the newspaper, but I know everyone doesn't. I don't know how to advertise that, I mean, this is on the website, but when I learned that that there was a town hall meeting in the, whatever, District Six or something today, I read the paper every day. And I didn't know that was happening. So certainly people that aren't connected to this, and clearly, you know, two of our board members are at that meeting. So that's a disconnect there. So that shows that that...
My suggestion, and we could write it up, as long as it happens, we can write it up whichever way, you know, folks think is best. But I think it should be a call specifically to develop that downtown alliance, so that you can place, we don't break up the time between four or five items. Just have a meeting just for that, and bring those stakeholder leadership with those groups to show up. Because that's where you're gonna need the firepower for people to commit to be part of that roundtable or alliance.
Yeah, just off the top of our heads, we could think of 30 entities, right, that are connected to downtown. I mean, there's more, but just, I mean, just brainstorming, we could think of those.
I think that's our, we can be the convener and create that. I know if that business group is meeting, I'm sure they're probably gonna be ready to bring folks together. We're still under this not, no action item, so is there any other, anything else that the board wants to talk about?
The only thing I had was a sort of a follow-up question to anybody here on the board or the city. Last month, we had a presentation from Rio Grande about an EPA grant. We approved a letter of support, and we voted in favor of that. Did anybody hear any follow-up in terms of that letter and issue?
Yeah, actually, they sent me the letter and made a few edits and signed it, I can send you a copy of it. So it's a non-financial, I'm sure they described it, it's a non-financial partnership. It's just basically support from local entities. Local entities cannot be funded by way of, you know, the regs on that particular program. I'll share with you the, I think it's still, they're still out before it's due, so I don't think...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it got done, because I know their deadline was coming up.
Yeah, they actually prepared a draft of it and made it easy for me to sign. The other topic, and it's not on the agenda, so I'm gonna talk about it on this, is the angle parking, the conversation you all had. I wanna make sure that we give it follow-up and put it on the agenda for action. If we need to lead and propose a recommendation to the traffic department and engage it that way, as opposed to going to them and waiting, if our consultants feel that you have that expertise to do that, I'm all for it, I'm all for it. And I think you all covered different plazas. I think some of you talked about, not just the, not just the Center for the Arts is, what's that plaza, what do we call that?
That's Mercado. But St. Peters, I believe, is not in our district.
So I just wanna make sure we give it follow-up, so that we put it on the admin list.
And also on convent, after hours. Didn't we agree, I mean, didn't we look into angle parking on convent?
Harold's Park.
Who wants to...
Well, I know that there's the bike lane there, but...
Rick or Edward, in fact, did any of you wanna speak on the angle parking? Are you all ready to come back, or when would you be ready, next month or two months?
I mean, I think Rick's release with Able City, I think we're pretty much ready. I mean, at least for that one block, because I think we've studied that one pretty well, you know, it'll increase the parking capacity. And actually, I, you know, we have a little presentation. I know we talked about this administrative component, and so Viviana and I met, and we sort of have a list of things that we wanna kind of bring, basically bring back to the board to say, these are the things we've been talking about, these are some updates, and these are things that we'll need, basically be addressing every month, I guess, so that we can at least just show that we're making some progress on those. But as far as the angle parking, I don't really want anything else said.
Edward Ochoa with KCI. Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to present that if you all want. And kind of on the topic of meeting with the department heads, we've got something scheduled here this week. And so as early as this week, I can just mention it to the traffic director. I think the, let's call it a schematic layout, or the layout that we did, I think is adequate direction for the traffic director. I don't, you know, we need to develop a set of plans and we can have that discussion. But my opinion, you know, they're very capable of restriping stuff, they might be able just to go with what we showed already.
So I'll add an item on the next agenda that will allow us to give, provide a recommendation to the city traffic and city manager and the council member on what we'd like to see there.
Would you like for us to mention it already at the meeting this week? As we talk about the TERFs stuff, that's the purpose of the meeting, but...
Now, if the council member wants more time, that's a different story. But I would say, I think if we're ready, let's go with it, I mean, that's...
We're ready.
Yeah, so we'll bring it back.
With your, whatever, like, before the next meeting and the next meeting?
It can if they're...
Or can we vote right now?
I don't have any limitation, we don't have the item, but I don't have any limitations with what they've already shown. If we're good for them to show that, we can ratify action. I'm curious to see what feedback you're gonna get, right?
You know, again, I don't, you know, we mentioned it and kind of discussed it at the meeting, I mean, I think...
What block are you talking about?
I particularly like what you did here at the Mercado.
The Mercado one.
I think Sanaa Gustin, that drop-off that never stops, and it's a cultural drop-off, that's more of the challenge.
Yes, sir. I think, so we drew something up for the Mercado, four blocks, right, four sides of the block. I think that could be presented already to the traffic director if you'd like, or to the traffic department, and at least let them digest it a little bit, and how we proceed is your choice.
It's not on the agenda.
Sanaa Gustin in particular, sorry to interrupt.
Somebody feels that we shouldn't be sharing those drafts.
The full block, is the full block, four sides?
It was four sides, yes. We drew something up of four sides.
And I believe that when we discussed it last month, it was already zoned for angle parking, so they could, the city could literally go restriping before we meet next month. You know, theoretically.
Yeah, ideally, what we laid out with angles and dimensions and number of spaces should be, might be adequate enough for them just to run with it, right?
But let's see what feedback you get, you know, if you get resistance, then that would change the way we're...
I didn't really get some feedback from the parking enforcement, I guess, because they, right now it's set up for pallet parking, so they only have so many meters. Now we're gonna add extra parking, you know, that brings that conversation to kiosks.
Why did they ever change it?
That's gonna be the conversation, what are you gonna do about the parking meters?
Right.
We talked about having one of those.
That's a good point. I think, you know, going from today to tomorrow, to restrip it would certainly affect how parking enforcement operations will work, right?
I mean, a kiosk is an eligible expense for us, so that shouldn't be an obstacle, this board can entertain that.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is, it's more of just the logistics of putting that all together.
Sure, yeah, I agree, I agree with that.
So do you think parking's gonna wanna put a meter at every angled space?
Yeah, we don't recommend that. It's just another thing to trip over, right?
Why do we not have angle parking right now, do you know?
I don't know, we have the old photographs that showed the angle parking, so we're not sure when it was...
You sure there's a reason?
I wonder what the drawback is, do you, does anyone?
Can't think of...
I really can't think of anything.
Because it's gonna provide more than double.
There's more travel space for vehicles in the pavement width, but I don't think it was, I just can't think of a situation that would have required more travel space, and so somebody said...
When you're going on Edo and turning south on Flores, could you make that turn, or you have to be behind that one car going west?
I mean...
There's enough room?
Very likely, on all of those streets, they're one-way's. So being that they're one-way's, they're already 30 feet wide, 24 to 30 feet wide, there's enough for two lanes, because it's one-way, right?
Well, let us know what feedback you get.
Do you have a number of how many spaces that's gonna be?
We did talk about a number at the last meeting, I don't recall off the top of my head what it was. It was an increase of 27, okay.
27 more parkings?
Yes.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's like, you know, I haven't counted, I think I might have already counted.
Yeah, we, the exhibit that we presented last showed the existing spaces, and then the proposed spaces, if you restriped. And so then it showed the net addition, right?
Yeah, so currently, there's 22 spaces on all four sides, and I think we were increasing it by like 20-something.
So we literally doubled that.
So more than 40 spaces.
A big gain.
That's good.
There's people that say that we don't, that we wanna take away parking, we wanna add parking.
Well, I mean, they came up presented that we have less traffic too, so this falls right in line with that. Okay, thank you very much. Let us know what the feedback is.
Okay.
So what do we decide, they're gonna figure it out?
They're gonna, go ahead and release information.
We, so what I'll do is, I'll take a copy of that exhibit to a meeting that we plan to attend this Thursday afternoon. With, it's a regular meeting with city departments, all the city departments. So I've gotten, I visited with them, and they said we can present our TERFs project at that meeting. So during that meeting, I can just take the exhibit and hand it to the traffic department. Have a side conversation with them, I guess, right? For all the departments I'm in.
Ask which department's in charge of downtown.
All right, item seven, update and discussion with possible action related to the implementation of TERFs number one mural program and any other, any matters incident or two. So a little bit of background, as I remember this, we did in fact take some action, at least more than a year and a half ago, to act, to put out these mural contests. That changed sometime last year, I don't remember the month that it changed. It may have been after our budget, so we, $50,000 was supposed to be dedicated to murals. And when we came back with the budget, you all remember in that presentation, we did 35. The amount to me is not consequential, I think it can be 50 if that's what this board wants to do. But we stalled it with the idea that we would go to an arts, coordinate with an arts commission that was being formed, and that obviously maybe hasn't taken off, I don't know the full background on it.
Yeah, it's, I watched a meeting or two.
So to me, I'd like to go back to the plan of us running our own arts mural program to get this up and going. And doing it in partnership with Laredo Main Street, using their admin power and their outreach power to execute this mural program. It's probably three, maybe four murals, I don't know the exact cost, I don't have that background in the art world myself, so. But it's up to this board. If you want to continue to try to coordinate, we will probably take more time in executing. Did you wanna show us something? I forgot one item on, well, I'll talk about it in item 10, but we do have a savings on the match, that's gonna be a good thing, positive news today.
So I guess, I guess, it's kind of a, to go along with that, we do have a slide here for the...
The murals.
For the, is it this one?
It dropped. Well, we have all the locations, there were eight locations. Let me ask you to, if you would, please talk to the councilwoman concerning the idea of us running our own mural program and not the arts commission. The arts commission has a arts plan for the city, including downtown, it's part of it. They've had issues, but they're trying to resolve, their funding was taken away. Ours, it's not funding that we're asking from the 2% for the arts, we're providing the funding. They're providing their knowledge on, you know, how to get the artist, the warranties, all the program is there for murals, they run that. And it's pretty extensive. So maybe if you'd allow us, or if, I don't know if the city would like to contact them, we'll be happy to do it. But I know that there's an arts master plan, and if we should...
Alexander, what are your thoughts, I mean, terms, you have an interest in seeing this take off?
Yes, and I watched them, just like what you're saying, they have a lot of expertise, it looks like, on that board, at knowing, you know, how to get it done.
What if it takes us another six months?
No, I think, I think it could be expedited, you know, because that board, I mean, if we hand them a project and say, get this done, you know, with identified sites, and maybe to, of course, I think we should approve what the, I'm hoping that, this is just a personal opinion, I guess all opinions, personal, that we could see something just fun and not historical, right? Some fun, you know, a flower, maybe bird something. So I know that the arts master plan has a lot of those comments in them, that, you know, the, how it needs to be more, not just historically oriented, or just, you know, what we've seen so far downtown. But I think they, the reason that they have, you know, maybe faltered is because the monies were allocated differently, and they're trying to fix that. And, but in our case, or in the TERFs' case, we're not, we're not asking them to put money in. We're, what they're, what we're asking to do is for them to give us a structure as to how to go for the artist, you know, do the request for proposals, they have all of that.
What is the rest of the board, what are you all, what are you all thinking? Do we wanna continue this and run the risk that it'll be more time, or do we wanna expedite it on our own with Main Street?
I could go to their next meeting and...
Does Main Street have the expertise to...
I think they have some expertise for sure, I mean, they're in that... I think they have some expertise for sure. I mean, they're in that space of, for sure embedded in downtown. And the other thing that's for us to call.
You're looking at me kinda funny.
Because the Main Street is charged with, uh, a lot of duties right now, which is fantastic, because they are, uh, they do have, um, they have a lot of expertise. In this area, but what they lack is staff and funding. They have quite a few projects on, that they're actively engaged in right now and, um, you know, they're, they're pretty stretched, pretty thin.
Can I ask you a question? Do you think that they would, this all would be put in order within sixty days?
I think it could. I, I, I think that, I think that we should. Give the arts commission the, the chance to at least respond and say, hey, we, we can't do it, or we all do it, or, but I don't think that's what's gonna happen. I think. I think they're committed members on there. I think the issues that they've had are n- not something that, that they're, that they've done. For themselves, done on their own, but, um, I would, I would give them the chance, and if you allow us, we can reach out to them. I don't know if you can find out when the next meeting is from.
Do you have, Mr. Hitler, Mr. Garcia, you have any thoughts? Does it matter to you all how we proceed?
No, I would say I would do, I'm, I'm gonna refer to the experts on that, and I mean, I'd like, I would prefer it be coordinated. And, you know, if, if Main Street is stretched too thin, then.
Mr. Garcia, any thoughts?
The only thing will be the funding, or where is the funding coming from? I don't think we can use the bond proceeds that we have. Because that was for infrastructure improvements, so it'll have to come from the, uh, tax increment of revenue.
All right.
And we started to have the fifty thousand. That's not, that's not a problem.
All right. So, so I, I personally don't wanna face, you know, public criticism over continued delay. Uh, but I do agree that sixty, sixty days, if, if we can get it done in sixty days, and that offers them an opportunity to. They don't have to source this. It's like, where's source it?
Is it meet once a month? Uh, I don't know if they're meeting this month, but.
If y'all tell us, like, look, there's some movement, or they're moving, and, you know, we, we can come back. I would make a motion that we continue to try to work with, uh, with the arts commission. And to try to do, you know, implement the project within sixty days. If not, we come back and take different action. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Mr. Martinez, seconds. Any additional discussion?
Is it called the Fine Arts and Culture Commission?
As reference, Fine Arts and Culture Commission.
They, yeah, they were actually created in, on this day in twenty seventeen.
Wow. So we may be, we may be the first project that, that gets funded.
No, actually, they've done a lot of really great, uh.
No, I'm saying that will get sourced and implemented.
But it, things got a little scuttled there, and I think it'll get resolved.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Any against? None motion passes. Thank you very much. Item eight, update, presentation and discussion of possible action related to the TURS number one ongoing improvement, design work in elements. As may be required or requested, this is a standing update item that, that we give our consultants. Is there an update?
Edward Chol with KCI again. Um, so we went ahead and submitted what we're calling our sixty percent plan set. Uh, we submitted that on March thirty-first, about a week and a half ago. We went ahead and submitted it to the city department, uh, Mr., submitted it to, um, engineering department, Mr. Chavez, and then he asked to submit it to a couple of the departments. So, uh, that's what you see here on the screen. This is kind of what we put together as.
We've covered this, right? You covered it last meeting, or is this a different?
No, sir. No, this, this is, uh, yeah, I guess the last meeting was before the, the sixty percent submittal. So what you see here was our sixty percent submittal. And, uh, I mean, I can go through it here, um, a few sheets. That's our working cover, cover sheet for now. Um, second sheet here is our general notes sheet and kind of a city block legend. And it shows, uh, the two blocks on Saragossa. We've always kind of said this is block one and two. The two blocks on Santa Agustín would be three and four, and then Iturbide going from Santa Urso la West is five, six, seven, eight, nine. So that's how we, we've numbered our blocks.
I, can I, can, I'm sorry, can you, are you saying that we're doing two blocks on Saragossa, two on San Agustín, and one, two, three, four, five blocks on Iturbide?
Yes, ma'am. The scope was nine blocks. So we, we've just numbered them in that, in that format. So as you see, uh, the sheets would say block one, block two, block three, block four, so on. They'll be in that, that format. And I, I'll be happy to, let me kind of give a summary of kind of the order of the sheets, and then I can always come back to that. But you'll see here, the first sheet here is existing conditions on block one, so that's, you know, the existing conditions of what it looks like today. So every section of sheets will have, uh, an existing conditions. Um, this is our demolition plan, so it shows what we plan on demolishing, um, and, and everything is kind of labeled on there. I can zoom in a little bit. Example here, um, you know, demo sidewalk, so many square feet, demo ramps, demo driveways, demo sidewalks, so on. We've got labels and quantities, um, on that. And, uh, so then you'll have an existing demo, the proposed site plan. And then, uh, there'll be a grading plan. We're finalizing the grading plans on those, so you'll have existing demo and site plan, grading plan. And as we add a couple of the additional sheets, they'll just kind of be put in there. But as you see there, there'll be the sheets for block one. The sheets for block two, the sheets for block three, the sheets for block four, the sheets for block five, and so on. So that's kind of the organization of the plan set that we're using. And I'll scroll kind of down a little towards the bottom. We've already started working on, uh, some of our detail sheets. Um, we've got a stormwater pollution prevention plan sheet here, um, that we're addressing. Really, the main thing there is as we demolish and, you know, tear up things on different blocks. Uh, not all blocks have curb inlets on the exact block that we're working on, but if there's curb inlets, then we're looking at. Stormwater pollution prevention on those blocks. This is just kind of an overall of where we wanna do that. And then again, we are kind of organizing our detail sheets, and we're starting to work on detail sheets already. Providing certain details as they relate to the project sidewalk details, uh, ramp details, and so on. So that's just kind of a quick overview.
Can you put it back on the, on the one where the, the blocks are identified, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I can, I can zoom in there if you'd like.
Too big. Thank you.
But, um, I guess if anybody has any questions or wants to look at that, I mean, we can.
Can you speak a little bit about utility relocation, what you, your expectation?
So, utility relocation, the, the main utility relocation that we're gonna have is on this first block of Saragossa. On this first block of Saragossa, we've got some utility poles. We've noted it right here. There's an existing pole to be relocated. Some poles we had to remain in our sixty percent plan. We conducted a walkthrough with AEP recently, and at that walkthrough on this particular block, AEP provided some. Um, feedback on different things, so we will, we'll make those adjustments to those poles.
This is, I'm sorry, but is this, what, what street is on the left and the right? Which, where are we?
This is Saragossa from Convent to Salinas, this block.
And this is the first block, but is, are there any improvements being made between Convent and Salinas? I mean, Convent and Flores? Like to the east of this?
On Convent and Flores, what we had talked about on this particular block, well, let me get to the, uh. This is the proposed site plan on that block.
But this is not, was this an identified block? This didn't have a number, right, in your?
This is block number two. So block number two would be Flores to Convent.
Okay, I see.
So on the Flores to Convent block, what we had talked about was, um, cleaning up this intersection. There's brick and concrete in different shapes. But we're tearing out that intersection to clean that up. Uh, we had also talked about some zero escaping and adding trees. And then tree, uh, tree wells around that. So you see here, we've got the additional trees that we're looking at adding. This is the, uh. Where you would walk in from the bridge number one pedestrian area. So, uh, there's, uh, what you see here is, it's kind of a low, low concrete wall that's right through there. So that's depicted by, by this here. And so the trees are just kind of strategically placed there for now.
So there's about nine or ten, uh, crepe myrtles that are in that patio area. So these, these are additional on the outside?
This is inside their patio.
North of that? Like north of the crepe myrtles?
Yes, ma'am. This would be within the right of way, within, within the street. Uh, there's nothing within the street other than this one tree here. And this one tree here that's in front of, this is the church's, um, church's chicken, uh, business. So with these trees, what we talked about doing was, uh, just constructing a tree well around that. We've got different ideas that we're working with, uh, the design team on, um, to address the tree well situation. But we're gonna put in tree wells there and there, and then we'd be adding, we've got four trees to be added with tree wells around those also. That's on, on block number two.
And what, is, are you all addressing all of the mismatched, um, brick that's, that's in the street there?
The, the miss, the mismatched brick is at the intersection of Convent and, uh, Saragossa, pretty much on the east side of the intersection. So that's what you see with this shading here. We're proposing to demolish that area, which is mainly the area that has brick. It's got concrete kind of at a. A radial concrete section in there, and so we talked about, uh, what we're showing here is that to be demolished and then replaced with concrete. So it'll be uniform concrete through.
So it's gonna be brick and then concrete here. And what about in front of the tack room?
Uh, it's brick already over there, and so we weren't, we weren't addressing any. This is brick all through here, and then it's, it's brick all through the Santa Agustín Plaza over here. What we're, what we're missing to show here is, uh, we wanna do a final field visit on this particular block to. Uh, determine the exact locations. We talked about some areas where the brick is kind of sunken in or, or kind of been raised up. And so we just need to do a final walkthrough to determine those areas, and then we're just gonna denote those bricks. Uh, we're gonna denote those to be just removed, graded, leveled, and replaced with the same brick.
And is there a lighting plan for this particular block? Because this is actually the exact block that I was talking about when I was. Asking for the alliance between the different, um, entities. This is the entrance to our nation right here. And it is not attractive. It's not, it's not only not attractive, it, it doesn't feel safe because it's dark.
So we can talk about adding streetlights if we need to?
So right now there's, that we're not addressing that here. There's no lighting here.
That's not that there's no lighting. We're not showing, uh, we're not labeling exactly where the lights are. That existing light improvements are. Um, there are existing streetlights that are mounted to the AEP arms. Um, we can denote that on there, uh, where they're located. Um, if there's more lights that need to be added, then we can coordinate that with AEP to have.
Turned, you know, how we saw those big flood lamps.
So when we were, when we were looking over at this intersection, this is the intersection of Saragossa and Flores. At the intersection of Saragossa and Flores, we do note here, there's, there's a street light right here at this location that's mounted on a pole. Um, what we also noticed here was there was a floodlight at this corner, pointing in this direction. There was a floodlight on this pole pointing in this direction. So we will, we can denote that there's a floodlight versus a streetlight, right?
There's lighting for all the trees. All the trees now have lighting in them, and, well, they will have lighting in them, so they'll be. Decorative lights into the trees, which will provide some lighting.
Yeah, or street, string lights possibly to.
Well, string lights, if we can put in some poles for string lights or attach to the, to the buildings, but that's, that wouldn't be a civil.
Edward, does that occur between your sixty and your hundred, where you start getting to all those details?
Sure, yeah, we can, we can get into that in all of our details.
Cause I, I think some of those existing trees, I think they've seen their due life. I think they're on their way out.
Well, there, there's only two existing trees in that block.
Pretty, pretty bad, pretty, very bad shape.
They're, they're big.
They're not taken care of. That's, uh, they, they need TLC.
I, I would think that they need TLC. I mean, uh, walking it the other day, they, they've got some pretty green leaves on it, but probably need to be trimmed up.
Uh, but the lighting will be on, on the, all, any, anytime we're working on this, we're gonna be providing the.
Conduit.
Conduit for lighting for all these trees.
I'm hoping that whatever is planned for this block is as handsome as what is planned for Iturbide. It's already had a ton of improvements, and I know with former people on this board, that was a directive. But, um, what, I hope that this is not, uh, inferior to what is happening on, or planned on Iturbide. I, I don't know, because I can't tell from this rendition, or this, whatever this is.
Well, the, the direction we were getting on this particular block was just to kind of, uh, clean up this intersection, add trees. And certainly the block and the bricks that are on the street already are, are walkable. And so the direction we were given was to kind of keep that walkable, keep the bricks there. Do a little bit less improvements in the way of sidewalks per se, right? Cause this street is closed off and walkable. So certainly if there's a different direction we need to take moving forward from the sixty to the hundred on this particular block, um, you know, we need to know.
And Edward, I, I like Flores, uh, but, you know, we're all busy and I don't have time to, you know, we don't have time to, we know you're doing your job. But is there any way that you could explain so that I have an understanding, and that I speak to stakeholders? And they ask me questions, and I don't know the answers, and I'm literally sitting here every month, and I don't have the answers. What, I'm, okay, cleanup and some trees and whatnot. That was the directive. What is the directive on Iturbide Street?
The Iturbide Street. On Iturbide Street, starting from. Starting from Santa Agustín to, um, Flores was to widen the sidewalks and kind of. Widen the sidewalks and kind of, uh, bring some increased walkability on the sides and bring the curves in. Um, and then kind of address the parking on those. So that's what's been done on. This particular street, similar to what was done in block one of Saragossa, right?
So, and, so widen the sidewalk here, but I didn't hear you say widen the sidewalk on Saragossa.
Saragossa, block one already has a widened sidewalk. Saragossa block two is the street that's closed off completely, right? So there's no traffic on it, so everybody is walking all over the street. And so that's what we were looking at on, on that block was, because that block, that block is already walkable throughout the street. Um, our understanding was, well.
Well, it's a, it's a little bit wonky.
Well, I mean, but that, that'll be addressed, you know, they're gonna have, we'll have to reset uneven pavers and get that recreated and reset, those pavers reset.
Santa Agustín was kind of similar to block two. Santa Agustín blocks three and flo- four, even though they're drivable now, you know, they get closed off. In the evenings, and they become kind of walkable on all sides, so we're addressing blocks three and four, which are the two blocks of Santa Agustín to be. Kind of walkable on all sides. Miss Alexander, you know that at any time, if you want me to visit with you and go through sheet by sheet and discuss the improvements, we, we are available, so.
So when I walk down Iturbide, it feels pretty walkable. And so we're, we're doing more to that? Iturbide is the, is the model.
This, this was, this is Iturbide Block Five. This is the existing conditions of Iturbide Block Five, which is from San Agustín to I mean, I'm sorry, yes, uh, San, Santa Ursula to San Bernardo. Um, in this particular area, you have a sidewalk here. It's about two feet. This is about three feet on this side. Um, this side is about five feet currently. And so.
You're aligning the sidewalks is another thing you're doing?
We're kind of aligning the sidewalks. We're kind of aligning the curb lines to some extent a little bit. And so we're going from from that to to this, or oops, apologize. We now have a sidewalk on the north side that's about six point seven feet in this location. It's five feet in this location. And then this sidewalk on this side goes from about nine feet to eight and a half feet. And then to about six and a half, six and a quarter feet over here. And then continues over to eight feet. And the variances of the sidewalk have to do, of course, with, uh, lining up the curb lines to essentially the property line or fence lines there.
And that's between Santa Ursula and San Bernardo, correct?
This particular one that I'm showing you here is.
What we've decided as a board and we've given you that directive is to do both sides of the block between Santa Ursula and San Bernardo, which on the north end is, I believe, two parking lots and a abandoned house. And, um, instead of doing, and zero walking traffic, instead of doing the both sides of Saragossa, which of course is full of pedestrians. And it also connects La Posada, um, uh, what do you call it? You know, uh, an anchor downtown and the sixty million dollar outlet mall. And I'm just clarifying that that's what we've decided to do as a board. Okay.
Again, if there's, um, any different direction we need to take, please, please let us know. Um, as we kind of go from sixty to a hundred percent, we can start to look at something different. This, you know, follows kind of the schematics that we've been kind of showing to date, I guess, so, alright. One thing, a couple of things that I wanted to note, um, I'm gonna go back to block one of block one, which is our Saragossa block. On, on the Saragossa block between Convent and Salinas, if you, right now what we're proposing was, you know, the improvements, the dual level on the north side and sidewalk improvements and the seating area and so on. But in, as we were visiting this area, the actual street of Saragossa between Convent and Salinas is pretty beat up. Um, it looks like, it almost looks like asphalt, but it's, it seems to be concrete because there's sections that are separating and cracking.
Right.
Um, you know, we, we talked about more, you know, direction on pedestrian walkability and not really looking at redoing the entire street itself. But this street might need to be considered, um, to redo the whole street. I think, um, you know, that's, it's certainly gonna add a completely different ticket item to that entire block altogether. But, uh, that's gonna be a discussion, I think, that we need to bring to the city staff to determine if, you know, there's another means for them to address that portion of it, or if it's something we need to include in this project.
Okay.
So.
That's a good, that's a good suggestion.
There's some, you know, some repaving in that, in that one block. The, uh, one of the other things that we were talking about, so we, we did meet with AEP in the field. Um, we had been meeting, we've been meeting with AEP a couple of times for the last few weeks. Um, our last meeting with AEP in the field, we, uh, walked through mainly these two first blocks of Saragossa. And, uh, AEP is gonna work on a cost estimate for us to, uh, go ahead and, um, clean up, as we talked about, kind of clean up some of these, uh, utilities. And one of the directions that we asked AEP to do was to, uh, provide us with a cost to change out the wooden poles to steel poles. Um, there's, there's currently steel poles in front of the outlet shop, so when they redid that area, there's steel poles over there. But there's wooden poles on this block of Saragossa and the, uh, second block of Saragossa. So, uh, we asked them, as they work on their costs for us, um, as requested, that you all had requested, where they're gonna look at putting in some steel poles also. Um, and then we talked about, um, uh, we mentioned at the meeting, Viviana had mentioned at the meeting, the walkthrough we had with them, uh, trying to see if AEP could provide us with, uh, some kind of a service agreement so that, uh, maybe their utility poles in the downtown area can be decorated with flags or something, kind of like what they do on Del Mar and McPherson, you know, or Jackman, you see how they, they string banners across. Yeah, um, and, um, we understand there might be a service agreement or some kind of an agreement with AEP. And so we've asked them to see if they could provide that for us, um, to, uh, see as, as, as we move forward with these blocks in downtown, if that can be done in those areas also.
Okay. Um, any other comments?
The la- the last thing I had was just, uh, we've got a meeting scheduled on Thursday with the department heads. Um, and, uh, or the department staff members, Thursday at two PM. And, uh, when we walked the project, uh, we were visiting with Councilwoman Sierra, and she's gonna help uh, us get, uh, another meeting, probably a follow-up meeting, maybe next week or the week after, um, with the, uh, different departments again, so that we can just kind of finalize any final comments from them.
That takes care of item nine. So if she's gonna do that, we don't need to take action, but, um, and if she agrees to do it, that's even better.
She, uh, she had mentioned to us, uh, at the conclusion of our meeting that maybe she would make some phone calls and see if she could schedule those meetings for us. Um, I will bring it up at our Thursday meeting that, you know, we'd like to see if we can schedule a follow-up meeting with the departments um, to speak more specifically about, you know, this project and get any final comments from anybody on their end.
Bring up that piece of rope.
I am gonna bring up that piece of rope.
You know, do it at the same time versus.
That and the water, the water issue.
I mean, that is, that's a big problem. We don't want stuff torn up that we just repaired.
Exactly.
Yeah, the, the discussion of the utility, so you had mentioned earlier about utilities. So what we are showing right now, until we get, can get maybe some further direction from the utilities department about, uh, replacing lines if any need to be replaced. But, um, what we are noting on our plans is, you know, if there's a water meter in a certain location and we're gonna remove the sidewalk and put new sidewalk, that water meter will just be adjusted to the new elevation, right? Um, there are that meter box, same thing with the clean outs and, and, and those features like that. Same thing with the sanitary sewer manholes or any manholes in the street will just be adjusted to the final grade.
And if they are gonna come back and upgrade, we need to put a sleeve so that they don't tear our stuff up. They, it's, it's pre, you know, pre-sleeved, but preferably they do this in concert with us. That would be, that would be the ideal situation.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, thanks a lot for that. Um, the next item, item nine, uh, was actually to try to set up something firm for this meeting with the department. Looks, looks like that's settled, so I don't, I wouldn't entertain any action on that. The next item, ten, discussion impossible, actions missing award to amend the project development agreement between the City of Laredo and the TERS number one to include the additional one million dollars project funding recently awarded by the MPO under the TxDOT, uh, Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program. So in looking at the agreement that we have with the city, can somebody put it up? I wanna make sure the board knows this, at least understands it. Page. You can go to the top, page three. So we did, we did articulate the specific, Mr. Castillo, the specific amount of money, um, on that agreement. Uh, so I think it would be in order for us to update that amount to spell out, uh, future improvements. Uh, we don't have to do it right now, but I think we do need to do it if we're anticipating we're gonna expend monies. So that, that kind of calls out, um, the, the two thou- the two million five, two point five million. So if we're going to add another million, uh, we would need to amend this, this agreement. This agreement is basically the, um, project development agreement between the TERS and this, and the city. And it kind of spells out responsibilities. Um, so I want the board to, uh, to take action, consider taking action today to begin amending this, this agreement. Um, we will need to prepare a, a, a list of projects. I don't think we're ready to do that. Uh, the, the team has not been engaged on the Salinas-Saragossa intersection improvements. But I think we'll, we'll, we'll be able to do that. I wanted to show you this so you understood this, this needs to happen as well. Um, the good news that I was gonna share, uh, is not completely, uh, firm and official, but the, the match that we pledged, the two, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars that we pledged, um, uh, uh, I was informed by, by the MPO director that it appears the county is now a disadvantaged, economic disadvantaged uh, county, uh, as a classification. And that allows TxDOT to fund part of the, of the match, uh, leaving us, um, hope I get this number right, five point eight percent match as opposed to a, a twenty percent match. So that reduces our contribution. I don't know if you've seen that before.
I, I've seen it before with other TxDOT grants where the city is, uh, considered disadvantaged. And so therefore the local match is less than, than the normally required.
So that's good news because that, that'll give us back a significant amount of money that we could use in other, in other things.
So is that up to fifty? How much?
Whatever five point eight of the one point two five is.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, so you'll see it when the agreement comes back to us, cause it'll, it'll be, if it is in fact going to be, uh, happening, you'll, you'll see it back on the agreement with TxDOT, um, saying at that point we, we would be official. But I wanted to give you, I think that's definitely good. And we, we were prepared to, to, to keep our pledge, but five point eight percent is definitely better than twenty percent on the match. Um, are there any questions or any, is the board ready to entertain this? You don't have to do that today, but it's.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, you're, you're saying change it instead of add to?
Amending, yeah.
But can't we just add to this?
Yeah, you would, you would, you would.
Like it wouldn't change this?
No, it would add, it would add to this agreement.
Add new language, right, to this?
Right.
This would stay?
Yes, correct. Any other questions, sir?
When, when do we start planning that?
We have to engage our consultants as well on this. Um, I think that, that'll come next meeting with, uh, them bringing their work authorization proposals for this board. So if you all could work on that. I know you've already done some conceptual, um, but if you all could bring both KCI and Able City, bring that back.
I'm hoping the support, we could all walk out there.
And walk it, yeah. So, uh, we prepared some very broad conceptuals that basically took the modeling that we did on Iturbide and Saragossa and said, well, this is what we would do there. There's, walking that will be, you know, if, and if we need to post it, we should post it so we can walk it together and really kind of agree as to what, what that's gonna look like. There's not gonna, a million bucks or one point two is not gonna do a lot, but it'll do some and, and maybe enough to, to create that, that corridor now to, to the airport island, the bridge.
Starting with a sign telling people if they turn there, they are in no man's land. So I watched a car last weekend, uh, turn there, didn't know what they were, they had the choice to go to Mexico or, um, well, I think the only choice is the parking lot and then, or run over people. And, uh, so he just floored it. He was upset and backed up all up that hill. So a sign saying, you know, this is no man's land would.
Yeah, that's, the wayfinding, it's off topic, but the wayfinding also stalled, right? So it got presented to city council with a different council member. Um, and, and I, I know the director for CBB couldn't get that converted into an action item, but I know we've done our part and we're ready, so we need to bring that back and, and visit with, um, uh, with Ms. Ramos to see if she's ready to take it to city council again. Um, I think it could, the, the presentation could have been different so that it would, it would have passed. So what didn't pass was this, the approval to, for city funding to be, um, the shared, uh, cost that CBB was gonna put in, into the wayfinding. Um, but I think we can bring it back. I think it was just at the end of a meeting, it was being rushed. I think we, we can present it again. I think it would pass if, 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 if the presentation was slowed down. I don't know if you all agree, but, um, that's off topic of the agenda item, but, um, or is the board prepared to take action on this, to amend this, to start, begin amending this agreement and bring it back?
I assume that we're gonna be wanting for the city attorneys to.
Yes, and if you wanna make the action and word it that way, that would be great, that we initiate discussions with the city attorney to draft.
Yeah, I think that's, the motion should be is just to engage the city attorneys to begin the amendment process.
Okay. And, and again, we start, we're still pending the FAA from TxDOT anyway.
Right.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Does, does amend, is that the same as add to?
Yes. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Castillo, moved by Mr. Heather. Is there any additional discussion? Can you repeat the motion?
Uh, a motion to engage the city attorneys for the, um, purposes of amending the development agreement to reflect the new grant.
Seconded by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, Rick, were you, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, I just, no, it's fine. Actually, I just wanted to, cause really this wasn't on an agenda item, but I did wanna just iterate to everyone, um, with regards to the administrative component that we talked about, this conversation that we had and what was brought up at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, I guess for the next meeting, we'll bring back sort of action items, I guess, for lack of a better term. Uh, you know, I have a few that, that we talked about, like the monument sign, we issued bid documents. I think there's some concern that there's some site work that needs to be done first. And so I think that's why that project hasn't gone out to bid.
Right.
Uh, but we'll get an update on that. We talked about the wayfinding, um, we, we need to talk about that as well. Um, our directional signs, you know, we came up with different options, you know, what are we, what are we doing with, with those? Um, you know, we had our wayfinding, so like, we're bringing back these topics that maybe even, I don't know, some of you, the newer board members might not be familiar with. Um, the last thing too, uh, design standards, um, we're, we've sort of been developing those in conjunction with what Edward's doing, but I think, I think we're ready now to kind of formalize those and how they tie back into the urban, the historic guidelines. And, you know, they kind of need to work hand in hand, so, uh, we'll start sort of keeping track of that as well. Um, you know, we talked about the MPO having a design, uh, committee meeting, uh, again, a planning meeting for the facade improvement grants. Uh, the website, you know, I know we sent the website out to everyone, they're trying to get feedback. We'll probably bring that back, send that out again to see if that's, we can keep pushing that a little bit. Uh, we already talked about the parking around the plaza. We'll be working on that next month. And then, um, you know, with the murals, we brought that up as well. So I guess I'm just summarizing everything that we've talked about and what we're looking.
Ongoing work.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Rick. Alright, we're gonna move on to item eleven, discussion possible action to activate the TERS Project Implementation Subcommittee to work with and assist the consultants and the City of Laredo with preparing the upcoming competitive procurement solicitation. So, um, I put that item on based on the conversation I saw occurred at the last meeting, that some of you wanted to be part of, of that. Um, so in my notes, we have a project implementation committee and it's actually in that development agreement. It's spoken to in there as well. Uh, Mr. Mia, myself, and Mr. Martinez, I think Miss Alexander, uh, wants to, would like to be part of that. You're welcome to, to replace me in, in that, in that committee. Um, my, my only, um, comment would be to make it a compet- a competitive proposal process so that we can qualify the, the contractor as opposed to straight bid. And hopefully the committee, Rick, you can explain the process, uh, when you meet a committee, um, so that we're not stuck. so that we're not stuck with a contractor that perhaps is not the best contractor to work on this type of specialty project. That the, that the, the instrument that we use to procure, and the city has a procurement responsibility, by the way, according to the agreement. But that we help them craft an instrument, a competitive seal proposal process, that gives us the best contractor that, that could be selected.
Right, so.
And then we, the other thing, that we can, that we can actually pull things out of it and change things. Sometimes on a straight bid, you can't.
Well, and I think that's, sort of to bring up that point, the city, their bids are set up a certain way and they do all of them the same way. It's sort of like a process. And so we can diverge from that process with this competitively sealed proposal. Essentially what it is, it's a, it's based on a scoring. So there's a scoring sheet as part of the bid documents and as a committee, you get together and you score individually. So it's not just price, it's also experience and other items.
Well, and sometimes you can't pull certain items out and, you know, the language is not there to allow us to do that, so that needs to be in there. And we've got expertise, I'm sure, of Mr. Castillo too, that we can use as a resource. Are you okay to replace me, answer?
I'm not interested in replacing you because.
Well, just so that we don't have, so committees.
It's the project, I didn't know that there was such a thing as Project Implementation Subcommittee. And can there not be four people or, I don't have to be a member of the committee?
It would, it would, it would mean that all the meetings would have to be posted, which is like probably in public and everything else. So the committees are set up so that you have a non-corem number. It's okay. I, I don't need to be in all the, all the committees, so, and I think it'll be useful. I, I think a committee is very useful, this type of subcommittee. So I, but I also think like someone from the city should be on it, although I would figure that if I'm on, Mr. Chavez would follow the committee.
How many subcommittee meetings have there been?
We haven't had one since the award for the RFQ for the engineer.
We had some committee meetings when we're doing all the wayfinding.
When we developed the project development agreement too with the city, we had that subcommittee as well. So it's been a while. But I do agree that it needs to be, we should not rush into it in May when the drawings are done, are done at the end of May and then we're handing it over just to the city department. I think if we're interested, we should, we should be involved early. So are you okay to join the committee?
Well, I'll go to one meeting and then see if I feel like I belong there and then if not, I will resign.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Martinez, you're good, you're on that committee. So I don't think we really need any action. I put it as action, but I think it's, Rick, do you, do you agree with the competitive proposal process or? And Edward, you too?
I think so. I mean, I think, I think for the most part, we generally like to do that format because then we're not stuck with the lowest bidder.
I mean, I've just, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but those are the things that I would wanna see, like really look at the contractor and, and do a qualitative value on it. And if you can achieve it through a bid process, do that. I mean, that's, I think the committee can help with that.
Well, I think, I think, I think as the committee, we can get together and decide what's the best.
That's fine.
The, the bid process will be going through the city of Laredo.
Yes, they have the responsibility under the agreement, but we also have a say. We're part of that committee, so.
When did, how do you always have, this is news to me.
We formed them when, I know when I first took over as chair, it may have been in March or April, we formed committees, where I might notes and may have been a little later, but we formed the various committees.
And, and this committee approves action on its own?
No, no, it does. That's why it's a non-corem, because once you have four, four of us get together, it's officially a core. And it needs to be posted and all the things, all the legalities that come with open meetings. So that's why we keep it to three.
So I do wanna bring up, I guess, a question, because as far as these committee meetings, because you know, you said, well, when was the last one that we had? Does that, I mean, do you want Able City to take over that responsibility of organizing those committees?
Yes.
Just thought I'd ask. I wanna be very clear.
We, we have another job.
We have, yeah, exactly. All right. Any other comments on this?
What other committees do we have?
We just talked about wayfinding. There's a committee there, Mr. Navarro, yourself, and A.D. We have a public engagement committee, that's yourself, myself. And the facade committee that I notated from last week, from last meeting is Mr. Martinez, Ms. Alexander, Mr. Mia.
Carol too.
Yeah, and I haven't been to one meeting. What else is there? I spoke with Damburida and she wants to have a meeting. Who else is on the facade program?
From this board, just Mr. Mia. All right, so I wanna get, get us out as, you know, we have one last item.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On these other committee meetings, do you want Able City to be also in those meetings?
Yes, absolutely, as the convenor and administrator.
Okay.
Yeah, please. You were, you were doing this before. I mean, you were, we were having committee meetings, not you, I mean, at Able City.
Yeah, yes, when we're told to, to do them. But in this, in this particular case, I think in the last meeting it was, I think they were gonna convene and I guess there was some meeting that happened I didn't hear about, so I, it was, Laredo Main Street was given the responsibility of.
I think you all should trail if there's these meetings. I think we should ask our third parties to make sure you're involved. That's the thing. So.
Okay, so are we waiting for Main Street to call us or?
No, I think this board is expecting you to give it follow-through.
Thank you.
Yeah. Discussion Impossible Action Regarding Invoices Submitted By Able City And KCI. And I think, I didn't see a KCI one, so we don't have one. We only have one from Able City. It's in your packets. I will move to approve the invoice as presented.
I second the motion.
Then seconded by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye. Any against? None, motion passes. Thank you very much.
What about KC, your invoice?
He's not working for free.
It's pro bono or what? Oh, I see.
Just wait for the next one. Motion, move to adjourn at 7:12. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye. Any against? None, motion passes. Thank you very much for the discussion today. Appreciate that.